Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to tonight's February 8th Town Board, Reinbeck Town Board Town Meeting. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, the Constitution, One Nation, legal, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. I will make a motion to approve our prior minutes of the January 11th reorganizational meeting and the January 11th special meeting. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I'd like to make a couple of announcements. Town Hall will be closed on Monday, February 15th, in observance of President's Day, and the 29th of February is the last day to get your town and county tax bill into the tax collector here in Town Hall without a penalty. That's February 29th. Does anybody else have any announcements? Any committee or liaison reports?
I think the 29th is a Saturday. It will be closed, but it can be postmarked that day.
Oh, the clerk just informed me the 29th for taxes is a Saturday, so you can pay it in person on the 28th here at Town Hall, and if it's postmarked by the 29th, it will be received on time and without penalty. Thanks, John. I will make a motion for Resolution 2016-047. Our preliminary accounts-
The 29th is Monday?
Yeah.
Resolution 2016-047, preliminary accounts payable abstracts, VAP 72 through 139, 55 checks totaling $65,151.08. May I have a second?
Second.
This is our accounts payable for the- through 2015. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. We'll go back to that announcement one more time. There's a discrepancy here. The 29th of February is on- I'm gonna check it now.
It is a Monday.
It's on a Monday, so you can come to Town Hall, or you can have it postmarked by then and pay your taxes without penalty. Thank you. Resolution 2016-048, I'd like to make a motion for preliminary accounts payable abstracts, vouchers 140-211 through 211, 47 checks totaling $1,162,524. May I have a second?
Aye.
This is for our 2016 bills, and it's so large because we're paying both of the libraries, we're paying all of the fire districts, the fire protection contracts, and water. There's a lot of new contracts being paid.
Exactly.
Is there any- it's a lot. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I will make a motion for Resolution 2016-049, our capital projects abstracts, two checks totaling $7,715.00. May I have a second?
Second.
One is for releasing all retainage for the boiler, Joe?
Yeah.
And the other is for taking out of our docs. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I'll make a motion for Resolution 2016-050 for our budget transfers and amendments. May I have a second?
Sorry.
This is the cleanup of our 2015 budget transferring. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2016-051, declaring Reinbeck lead agency for the transfer of the Vandenberg Cove Sewer District to the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority, reviewing our short environmental assessment form and issuing a negative secret declaration. I'll make the motion. May I have a second?
Second.
What we're doing here tonight is where, if you haven't done it already, you should review part one of this, which is the short environmental assessment form. It was- all the information here came from the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority, and it was prepared and checked by our attorney, by our town attorney. Part two, I reviewed all questions, and it looks fine to me, as has our town attorney. We reviewed them. Does anybody have any questions on either of these two forms, or does it look fine to everyone?
No.
What we're going to do first is vote to issue a negative secret declaration, and then we can vote to turn it over, well, I guess it's all now that together, to the county. Is there anything else anyone would like to discuss? Any questions or discussion from anyone in the audience? All in favor of declaring Reinbeck lead agency and issuing a negative secret declaration?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. The- I'll make a motion for Resolution Number 2016-052, which is the agreement for transfer of the Vandenberg Cove Sewer Wastewater System to the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. This will now go over to the county legislator, and they'll have to put it on their agenda. In I think 45 days, it'll come back to us, and we can pass it. So we're looking at transferring this by mid-spring, I believe. Thank you, everybody. That's good work. That will help us out greatly, or help out the people in the district as well. Resolution 2016-053, supporting the institution of a posted speed limit of 10 miles an hour within the Thompson- Thomas Thompson Sally Mazarella Park. May I have a motion and a second?
Second. Or all move.
I'll second it. Any discussion here?
Yeah. I guess the question is, one, speed limit, Alan said it went down. I myself thought 15 miles is not unreasonable, but the other thing that caught my eye was we've taken out all the speed bumps. And my understanding is that this is because of difficulty of plowing with the speed bumps. I did speak to our maintenance person, and we talked at least about putting a temporary speed bump in over the summer, because I don't think speed limits are really much of an answer, because there's not gonna be policemen there all the time, and we're much better off with a speed bump where it's unsafe. Apparently, one of the key places where the red refreshment stand is, Bobby thinks he can construct a temporary speed bump there and a, perhaps, another one-
I thought we owned two portable speed bumps. Yeah, we had- I thought we had to-
Well, he's saying that it got pushed, and it's not heavy enough, but I can ask him again, where do you think those are?
I don't know.
I can look into that.
Do you have portable speed bumps at the department?
I think we do.
Not, it's something we can look into, you know?
Maybe you can coordinate that with Bobby.
Yeah. First of all, I don't think speed bumps and speed limits are inconsistent with one another. I think, in fact, having a speed limit, well, the speed bump will help enforce the speed limit. If people come down there 30 miles an hour and hit a speed bump, they're gonna-
Alan, they said that they were aesthetically not pleasant to look at. That's why they didn't want to bring that-
What?
Speed bumps.
It's plowing. It's difficult to plow.
All right, but that was in the email that we got, so one thing is somebody, I don't know who the liaison is, the Thompson Mazarella-
Alan.
-park, maybe you can, you know, if we agree that we think we ought to have some portable speed bumps there during the season, yes, you know, so we don't run into opposition from them.
Yeah. Well, okay, I'll do that, but I think-
The speed limit is another question.
I think the speed limit is-
This is what we were asked to do.
Yes, of course it is.
And we will check into portable. Is there any- did you have any?
The question is whether-
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
I have a question. I thought that they were both, I think, you know, speed bumps and the speed limit.
Yeah. The question is whether it should be 10 miles an hour or 15.
So I drove that road at 15, and it's fine, except in the one spot where you cross over the old road, you know, with an intersection, is 15 seemed a little on the edge. So I support 10. I'd support 14, but, you know, 15 will work, but, I mean, if people just drove at 15, we'd be fine, but I think 10 is probably a better-
Great. Thanks. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Thank you.
And we'll get the speed bump thing going.
Thanks, Alan. Resolution 2016-054, appointing Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second. I'll second it. Scott Bergen has expressed a willingness to serve. Thank you, Scott Bergen. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2016-054, did I skip one or mix them up? I think I might have.
I thought we're on 55.
Okay. Hold on.
Yeah, this is the-
016, I'm sorry, 2016-055, appointment to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Can I have a motion and a second?
Move.
Second.
Richard McAluso has sent in a resume. I think we've all met with him. The chair has met with him. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Ed, are you the liaison to the board?
Yes, I'll come.
Will you let him know, and will you thank the other applicants for their-
Teresa?
Thank you.
Hello.
Little cleanup here from our reorg that I forgot. Resolution 2016-056, appointment of the registrar and the deputy registrar. I'll make a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
We're appointing John Gautier and Joan Winnie as our deputy and- as our registrar and deputy registrar. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2016-057, may I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Mark. Joe and Alan, thanks. Town, this is an application to Town Hall for Synoclaus event, the weekend of April 16th and 17th, for a, I believe, a clothing sale, which is a big- it's a clothing swap, which is very popular. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2016-058, request for proposal for commercial mower. May I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this?
Yeah, I have a question on this. The procedure, it seemed unclear as to whether when you go out with a request for proposal, we should go to the board. You know, clearly, once we get the bids in, you go to the board. Do we want every request for proposal to come to the board before it goes out?
I think we do. Yeah.
Okay, it just slows up the process, because we meet every two weeks, so-
We have in the past. Why wouldn't we?
I'm not sure what our practice is in the past.
You wanna look into it, or?
No, I remember, John, we had talked about this, and it was just unclear. I thought, you know, long, detailed, expensive things, this is like a routine item, which is gonna cost under $10,000.
I'll ask Warren what his advice is.
Yeah. I know the park committee, for instance, will go get bids and come to us with stuff, as you know.
I'll ask Warren about it, and maybe we could- maybe we can tighten up our procurement policy.
Well, it's nothing in procurement policy on when you go to the-
We could add it.
... board.
Yeah. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2016-059, it's a shared services agreement with New York State Department of Transportation for emergency services. May I have a mo- I'll make a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Our highway superintendent is here, Barry. Did you wanna speak on this, or?
Joe asked me earlier today if I could get a reading on a clause in there that-
I'm sorry, can I ask you to step up, just so we can just- I'm sorry.
Joe, is it better?
Yeah, thanks.
Joe asked me earlier today if I could get a clarification on a clause in there that asks for the townships to indemnify the state in the event of any adverse situation that would become illegal per- and there is no clause in there that grants us indemnity from the state, so I think we need more clarification on that. I called down to Kipsey today, but-
Did you talk to Bill B- I mean, Dana or-
I left a voice message. I didn't get a call.
I was at a meeting at the emergency services last month, and this is a boilerplate resolution that they're asking us to pass, so that we're covered in emergency, so that we have this in place and we can do it.
Exactly.
I don't think it's an issue.
It's not an issue on my part. There was a legal question, and I'm not qualified to answer the legal question.
Yeah, it's paragraph four.
Thanks, Barry.
There's never been, my understanding, written out, Raymond. It's always been an oral understanding. Paragraph four says it's an indemnity that just goes one way, not the other. It's, one would certainly think that it should be reciprocal, since the aid is reciprocal. So at least, I think we ought to table this till the state gets back to us to see if they will make this reciprocal. It's not an unreasonable position for us to ask for indemnity, if they're asking for indemnity.
Is there any-
I'm surprised they didn't order in.
Is there any further discussion? You have an open motion on the table? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
To table.
I was making a motion that I think we ought to table it.
There's an open motion on the table.
To table.
To table.
No, I have a resolution on the floor to approve this. There's nothing on the table.
Okay, well, I would like to amend that motion to table it.
Make amendment to table that motion.
Yeah.
I disagree. I think we need to sign this. All in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Aye.
Table.
Joe, can we do that sentence?
We're not adding a sentence to a State Department of Transportation. This leaves us uncovered in the event of an emergency, so, Joe, you'll follow up on this?
Yeah.
Resolution 2016-060, appointing planning and zoning attorney, John Lyons. I'll make a motion. May we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2016-061, appointment to the Thompson Mazarella Park Committee. May I have a motion?
Move.
Did you motion?
Yes.
Then may I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? We're appointing Tom Connolly to a two-year term. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2016-062, summer recreation soccer camp. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, same question.
Sure.
Are you gonna check that?
What, I wanted to ask your question.
These two sessions, they don't say whether they're for the entire summer, each one is separately funded.
Okay, so we don't have enough information here.
What are you- what are you asking for?
It doesn't- this doesn't say that we are-
How do you count these people?
It doesn't specify that this is- excuse me, can you hold on? That this is two, two sessions or one session. It says session one and session two, and it says 200 per trial. It says 200 per child per session. What are we missing?
That's not what the issue is.
It's the number of people, number of participants.
Oh, the per session?
Yeah, the per session. Right, sure, it say at the end, compute it separately for each session.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to table this. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Will you, Alan, follow up on that?
Yes.
Thank you. We have a couple of discussion items. Slate Quarry Power Lines, Tab 17. We had a letter from a resident here who- Joe, do you wanna speak to this? He sent you the letter.
Yeah. There's a situation on Slate Quarry Road that may be duplicated, other places within the town, where Central Hudson moves power lines and- which formerly has Central Hudson lines and Frontier lines. Frontier has not moved the telephone lines to the new poles installed by Central Hudson, and this has occurred on Slate Quarry Road. A particular homeowner has complained to me or brought this matter to my attention, and his and her situation is particularly egregious in that they have telephone lines in their backyard, within 20 feet of their house, and Central Hudson no longer uses those poles, will install new poles across the front of their yard. So they're surrounded by telephone wires and electric wires. They have tried on their own to get Frontier to move the wires to the electric lines, so far without success. So I've drafted a letter to Central, I'm sorry, to Frontier-
Frontier.
-that I propose that the board send to the president of Frontier. My own experience is sometimes you get action if something goes to the president of a company, because they usually have a special person who takes care of complaints to the president. So let's see if this does any good. If not, and it's a problem throughout the town, we may have to do some research. I did speak briefly to the Association of Towns and to our attorney, and it's an area that nobody seems, at this point, to have the expertise to answer questions without research.
Joe, I have a question. Did they, Mr. McCann try to ask Frontier what the reasoning was behind the denial?
Can I speak to this, just in a broader sense? There's an issue with Frontier, and over the past four years, they've stopped co-locating. And I've been told by people at Central Hudson that it used to be par for the course, that they'd co-locate on Central Hudson poles, which are higher than the telephone poles. We went through this in our neighborhood this summer and fall, when several dozen poles were relocated, Frontier would not co-locate. I have a pole on my yard from Frontier, and tried to get them to co-locate with no success, as did several of my other neighbors. So it's becoming more prevalent, and I can give you the number of someone at Central Hudson to talk to who liaises with them, but they're not doing it. So I would be in favor of sending this letter, and I would be in favor of doing it broader, not just with respect to this one resident, but that we're noticing that it's happening in instances over our town, and we've spent a lot of money on our zoning law and our comprehensive plan, which places a great deal of stress on visual impact of utilities and construction, and call their attention, urge them to co-locate.
Well, I would suggest that we take it one step at a time. Let's see if this letter gets any action, and then we can follow up with a broader letter.
Well, it's not just one instance. It's many instances, so I think we could at least say that we're aware of several other instances.
We could add a sentence to the letter to that effect, but let's just focus on this problem. Let's see if it goes anywhere. It may be that-
Do we wanna send it to anybody else other than the president? Should we get a name of the local person here who co-locates?
My experience is we're better off sending it to the city.
All right, is there any other? Do you have anything else to add, Alan?
Well, two things. One is, what's Time Warner doing? Are they moving their lines? Because there's, there are really three users of the phone line.
I think Time Warner is on the- is on Central Hudson.
I think they are.
They're on Central Hudson.
So they move, they move?
They co-locate.
Okay.
Ed, did you have anything to add?
No, I still, they still never gave you an answer as to why they-
They're not doing it for the bottom-line reasons. They're not sending people out to do it.
Right.
And they also, the poles are a lot shorter, so their pruning of trees are a lot more vigorous. It's, they locked off the top of one of our white pines instead of co-locating. It's just the way, you know, it's, it seems to be financially driven.
We'll see what the president says, if he responds.
The people's deeds show that as an easement?
Yeah, these are easements.
They're easements.
But to try to find easements, they probably were given in the 1930s, and you have to-
And before, yeah. But, you know, for instance-
And as well as the franchise agreement with Frontier, I had asked John to look for it so far. I haven't heard anything. I don't know if, John, if you could even find it as to when that was entered in.
Is there any further discussion? All right, thanks for doing this. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Thanks, Joe.
So, the board, do I have to make this in the form of a motion, so that we authorize the supervisor to send the letter in substantially the same form? I still move.
I think we just approved you sending it. Yeah, the agenda. I lost my agenda. Okay, I can wing it. Our next discussion item is the Town Hall Historian Report, Tab 18. Did all of you have a chance to read this? Any- well, I thank Nancy for her, for her service. The one thing she has said here that she would like the Native American artifacts that were found at Thompson Mazarella returned, and I wanted to call your attention, the public's attention, and I'll make Nancy aware of it, that SHPO, the State Historic Preservation Office, recommends that all architectural artifacts be kept at a university or a college with a full-time archaeologist on staff. We have that with Bard. Bard's graciously accepted to house and catalog these for us. We have a letter from Christopher Lidner, who's the professor of archaeology at Bard, and from Jim Brodvig, who's the president of- he's in charge of all the faculty and the- and Alan and I have met with him, assuring us that these do belong to the town and that the college is keeping them for us under the terms of SHPO's guidelines. So I still believe that they're better off, it's bags and bags of soil with pottery shards in it, and it's- and several very small shards. To your eye, you wouldn't know that most of them were even artifacts.
That's correct. In fact, I don't think anybody would recognize them as artifacts unless they were archaeologists.
There's a couple that maybe you could say were, but it, you know, they're literally, you know, gallon and two-gallon bags of soil, all identified from different level of digs. So I still believe they're better kept there than under lock and key at our library without a professional archaeologist to oversee them. And Bard's assured us whenever we want them back or we want to make an exhibit out of them, they'll assist us and help us. So that's my one comment there. Is there any other discussion on this? So thank you, Nancy, for your annual reports. Discussion item number three, installation of black backflow prevention device at Town Hall.
I want to raise this and a couple of other things, I have a new business. In the furnace room is where the water comes into Town Hall. We are supposed to have a backflow device to prevent the water from going back into the village's water system. I have explored this with the engineer. The Weston and Sampson people have done a drawing of what a backflow device should be. They have charged thirteen hundred dollars to do the drawing and we have the drawing.
Thirteen hundred dollars in engineering fees for a back, drawing of a backflow device?
Yeah. It's not a simple drawing. It's, I'd be happy, it's in my box. Looks somewhat complicated. The question is it has to be approved by, you need a permit to do it and the county health department gets involved in it. Weston and Sampson wanted another thirty-nine hundred dollars to get the approvals. I did it myself and got the approval, so we've saved the thirty-nine hundred dollars.
That's great, yeah, I would think we could do that or a building inspector, so, thank you.
We got the permit from the village who worked with the health department.
Great.
So now we have to go out and for bids to put it in. We're at that stage. Now, once it's in, it has to be inspected.
By?
By a list of approved inspectors and that will cost us some money. And then it has to be annually inspected at a cost of between a hundred and fifty and three hundred. I was given that ballpark, although the village water department thought it would be closer to a hundred and fifty dollars, but that will.
Do you have an RFP to go out to bid yet?
Yes and no. It'll be the drawing and it'll be a very simple thing, which will say, give us a price for installing and making sure we get a favorable report that it works and how much will it be?
When do you anticipate being able to get a RFP together?
Hopefully this week.
So for the next meeting?
What?
For the next meeting?
Yeah, although we have the open question whether we have to get approval of the RFPs or we can just come back with the bids. At least on this, I would propose to come back.
Are we, on some RFPs, we are obligated to award the contract, correct?
Uh, I think if you come under the state law, Town Law one oh six, this would not, this is going to be under ten thousand. My recollection is that statute is more than thirty-five thousand.
I would just, yeah, because I want to be careful of having something that says anyone can go out to RFP if, in some instances, we are beholden to award, so that's my only concern.
Right, and maybe what we ought to do with, we don't want it to come here, is under a certain amount, under ten thousand.
We said we'd ask Warren for advice and amend our.
Yeah.
I'm in favor of all RFPs coming here, but as I said, I'll talk to Warren for advice and, and look at.
So I have, I have a couple of questions. We've never had a backflow preventer or we did have?
No, we never had one.
And it was required all along?
It's probably in such an old system that it was grandfathered non-conforming use.
Is that correct?
Uh, we did not have one.
I understand, but, I mean, the law, the, the requirement to have one's been around for a long time.
Well, we're going to get one.
Okay.
So is there any more discussion? We're going to, we're going to be compliant.
Let me, let me raise two other things.
Hold on, does anybody else have anything else to raise? I have one new point. You go, you can do another one, then I'll go, Joe.
Okay, I have two.
All right, you can go, then I'll go, then you can go.
Okay, one, just to tell the board, the dock, we put in the new bulkheads. Unfortunately, we think, we know that one of the new timbers has been damaged in the sense that it's been pushed out of kilter.
By the ice?
By, well, by the large Coast Guard vessel.
Again?
Yeah, but it's not that serious. Bobby thinks he can fix it by putting some shims underneath it, but he will be calling upon Barry for help.
Why don't we, why don't we file another insurance claim and see if the Coast Guard will take care of it?
This is probably too small to do it. I think we're talking a few hours of backhaul time and it's more time and effort on our part. But I just wanted to bring the attention of the board. These are very big ships and we'll see what the experience is with them if we're going to have a constant problem.
Okay, thank you.
But then we, we just need a little bit of farm boy engineering down there?
You can handle that.
Yes.
That's, that's your middle name, isn't it?
We're most.
Did you have anything more on the docks, Joe?
No.
Okay, so while Alan was away.
Well, I, I got one more, I.
Well, you're going to come, we're going to come back to you.
Okay.
While Alan was away, I got to play recreation park referee. And what I'd like to propose is that at our, at our March fourteenth Town Board meeting, we have a workshop where we can hear from the Thompson Mazzarella Park Committee and we can invite the rec committee, Alice Cunningham, the Rhinebeck Soccer League, community garden, swim team, and the lacrosse league to come while we hear from the, from the park committee, what, how the development is going, what's happening next, and hear from all these people what they're looking for. Because there's a lot of talk going on and a lot of people are lobbying for, whether it's fields, we need to start listening in public to people so that we can make a longer-term decision about how we want to spend tax money or if we want to spend tax money on, on the continued development. So I'm proposing a March fourteenth workshop, which we will run as a workshop. It's not, we will be asking people for input for us, so think about, you know, what you want to hear and.
Well, are you proposing that we wouldn't also have a regular Town Board meeting?
No, it'll be at our Town Board meeting.
Oh, okay, because you said a workshop.
Workshop at our Town Board meeting.
Okay.
It's like a.
So it'd be the first part of the meeting?
Yeah, well, actually, we'll do it after, we'll do it after our resolutions. We'll do our resolutions and then we'll do the workshop.
Okay, the second item I wanted to raise is green energy that I've, Alan and I have looked at this for a couple of years. Bruce had the responsibility last year. I think it's time to repeal those provisions. And the question I have is, should this be done as part of the general overhaul of the zoning law or should we do it separately? And I don't know how close that is and whether it's a duplication of effort or not.
I'm having a meeting with them on Thursday, I can find out.
Okay, as.
It's a local law, though, right? This is a local law.
This would be a local law.
I think we could start the process, at least, at least open up a public hearing. I don't think we should wait for, it's a list of housekeeping and we might need another meeting or two after this.
Okay.
I mean, at least we could set a public hearing and discuss it.
Okay, so let me put a resolution on for the.
But I'll bring it up with them on Thursday.
Bring us to whether, and you go through the reasons why.
Just to underline something that Joe just said, and that is that the state building code has gotten greener and greener over the years. And when you look at the difference between what we might do and what they're doing, it seems small and it seems like we'd be, we'd be, it'd be much easier to be consistent with the state building code rather than having our own version of it.
Yep. Is there any more discussion on this? Does anybody else have any items for discussion? Is there any public comment on anything we've discussed or anything that we haven't discussed? I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, good night.